Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, February 17th. My name is Scott Bugby. To my right is Jim Leehan. Joining us shortly will be Jeff Palumbo. To my left is Jack Hathaway, our Town Administrator, and to Jack's left is Marion Harrington. Jack, could you read our agenda for this evening?
I'd be happy to. By the way, happy birthday, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, thank you, sir.
The Norfolk Board of Selectmen meeting for February 17th. First order of business, we have Town Administrator Report and action items, requests from the library, discussion items, a review of the draft warrant, which actually I don't think we're going to do tonight. And because, well, I'll tell you later. And then we have Mr. Bragdon in to discuss accepting chapter, accepting chapter 32B, sections 21 to 23, and then we have an executive session for litigation.
Great. Okay. So, since we don't have Jeff yet, we have the request for the Friends Library for the annual bake sale, I assume.
We do. And actually, I have one other agenda item that came up that we can talk about.
Mr. Chairman, may I though before?
Yeah, please.
We want to wish you a happy birthday.
Thank you.
Today is your birthday, right?
It is, yeah. Official day.
We, Marion and I, took upon ourselves to do a public polling today, just to wish you a happy birthday.
You guys are so nice.
We did not write in the grumpy. I want you to know that. That actually came from several citizens. But there was a polling of people. We asked people to guess your age, and those statistics are up on the board. Reasonably accurate, I think.
Yeah, reasonably, yeah. As accurate as I am usually.
Yeah, I can understand. But anyway, we do wish you a happy birthday.
Well, thank you, sir. I appreciate that. And I like the fact that 31% of registered voters weighed in, so let's do that for town meeting.
Well, it was an entertaining topic.
Hopefully better than my 50th birthday, in check and reminders. Awesome.
Maybe before Mr. Palumbo, I could talk about.
Yeah, that'd be great.
For those folks at home, you may know or may not know that we lost a longtime citizen from Norfolk. The reason I'm mentioning this particular gentleman is he's one of the few gentlemen that has actually served the town of Norfolk in the capacity of a three-term selectman, Jack McFeely. Jack served on a number of boards in town. He served on the HOD Building Expansion Committee, Norfolk City, Norfolk County Advisory Board, Norfolk County Selectmen's Association, and did serve as a town administrator in Rentham, I believe, for three or four years. Years in interim, and I think three years as the full-time administrator. He died very suddenly, unfortunately for all of us, last week. That's why the flags have been at half mast. If any of you were driving through town, I believe his funeral was Thursday, Friday. Anyway, the fire department had the large flag draped over the street in his honor, and there was a reason for that. I hope folks at home know that our fire department has advanced life support capability, and we have saved lives in the town of Norfolk because of that capacity. My first year on this board in 2004, I think, Marion, if I'm right, was at Jack McFeely's last year on the Board of Selectmen, so I had the pleasure of serving with Jack. The concept of advanced life support was Jack McFeely's. As our fire chief, Cole Bushnell, calls him, the founding father or godfather of ALS. Jack had suffered several heart attacks, and on both occasions, our capacity, or at least on one occasion, I should say, I think one happened before we had the capability, Jack benefited from the services. And quite frankly, they brought him back, and which, and it's ironic that Jack passed in Millis, where they do not have advanced life support capability. But we will miss Jack. He was of great service to the town. I laugh because I think of so many funny stories with Jack McFeely. I don't think Jack and I ever agreed on a single thing in all of them. We served on many committees together. I don't think we ever agreed, Jack. I don't think you ever agreed with him either on anything. But I had great respect for his desire to help the town. Jack didn't do a thing that he didn't believe served the best interest of the town. And I will tell one funny anecdote about Jack. I remember after he was on the board, there was a Warren article. You may remember this, Jack. He was sitting in the audience, and he was very much against this article. It was when Frank Gross was still moderator. And he was bound and determined to speak eloquently against this article. And he was well-prepared, and he's sitting there. I could see him sitting in the audience. Remember this? And he was diligently writing away all of the remarks that he was going to make in talking against this particular article. And he and Frank had had a little dialogue beforehand that was entertaining, to say the least. And Frank brought the Warren article up, and I think in less than 30 seconds presented it, discussed it, and voted on it. And Jack was still busy writing away, and all of a sudden, after the article was voted on, it dawned on him that this had all occurred. And he raised his hand and said, point of, and the dialogue between Frank and Jack was tearful. It was so funny watching this happen. But Jack was a dedicated man to the town of Norfolk, and his wife Jackie is a school nurse at Freeman Kennedy. And I know this is a great tragedy to her and to her family. He leaves a daughter and a son, and he will be missed. And thank you for indulging me, but when someone serves the amount of time and effort and gives of himself the way Jack has to the town of Norfolk, it's certainly worthy of a few minutes of this board's time to say thank you, and that we'll miss you, Jack. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. That was wonderful, Jim. Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the?
My apologies.
Sure.
So moved.
Seconded. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Jack, what else can we cover without Jeffrey?
Well, we could, I'm sure if we bring Mr. Bragdon up, we can kill some time.
Scott, would you care to join us?
Good jumping ahead.
We're jumping you ahead.
You can ask your questions.
No questions. We ask questions, you answer. That's why my grumpy comes in.
Which age did you pick, Scott?
Yeah, before you sit down. Be careful.
Forty-one, I think you picked.
Scott's not up for a beer.
If you had a chance to see that.
Yeah, actually, I just wanted to apologize for leaving the room there while you were speaking about Jack. I certainly did not mean that to be disrespectful. Jack was a good friend of mine, a boss, and a wonderful person who will be missed greatly. As you said, I had a ton of respect for Jack, and he's been re-engaged. I worked with him while he was in Rentham. Obviously, I worked with him while he was a selectman here, and then while he was a town administrator in Rentham, and then more recently while he had worked over at the NC, back again at NCTV as the chairman of the board over there. And he was a passionate, intelligent, caring person, to an extreme on each.
It was also nice. There were a number of former selectmen at the funeral, and it was nice that the family included us in allowing us to pay our respects to Jack. And it was very nice. All of whom that were there had served with Jack, and it was nice. Or as nice as something that sad could be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, Scott.
Okay, so.
What's your question?
Poor Boo.
Oh, my goodness. That's a lot.
There's a lot. We're not going to vote on it tonight because I have to do some notification before you vote. But I do want to talk about this. So.
Civil service.
Yeah. This has to do with what we can, what we can do as far as making changes to the medical plans. So, as you probably know, any change to the medical plans is negotiable with the unions. Back a few years ago, when the budget crunch happened and the recession, and everybody's budgets were being cut dramatically, the way that it was set up under this regulation, towns and cities had no ability to negotiate with unions if they refused to make changes. And it was a real budget buster. So, the state did pass some additions, section 21, 22, and 23 of chapter 32B. And while giving the unions still protection, there is about a 90-day process that we can go through to negotiate changes to the, to the plans. The maximum change that we could make is to what the GIC, who does the state plans, what they call their benchmark plan, which is the plan that is the sort of average, most common plan that people take. In the last few years here that I've been negotiating the medical insurance, the difference between that plan and what our plan was, was minimal. About 1% to 1.5% savings. So, it wasn't, you know, worth going through a whole process to kind of push that. The GIC, in their infinite wisdom, in the last two years, has had, have had zero increases and really no changes to their plans. As you can imagine, that is not sustainable, nor was it then. Two years ago, they ran a $50 million deficit. This year, the deficit is around $175 to $190 million, which the state had to make up. Some of that is overhead, but they, you know, they should be, in my opinion, they should be covering these costs. So, they did meet last week. They are making some changes to their plans. It will be July before I'll know really what their new benchmark plans till we see what their enrollment is. But with the changes that they're making, it is now possible, I don't know for sure, but it is now possible it could, could be beneficial to the town from a budget point of view. Still may not be something we want to do, and we talk about it further. But we cannot do this unless you, as a board, adopt these three sections of this law. So, there is no downside to doing this. We don't have to do anything with it. We can adopt it and then ignore it. If it doesn't, you know, make us savings, if it comes out to another 1% savings or something this year, I probably would not come back. There'd be no reason for me to really come back and ask for changes. But should something come back significant, then we have a process that we can use to negotiate with the union that will come to a determination at the end. If there is any savings to the town, this legislation calls for a sharing of that savings with the unions and the other members. And so, that would be something that would be part of this negotiation, how we, how we return that money back. Do we pay for co-pays or whatever would be part of that negotiation. So, that's really what this is about. And I will need to, if you think it's something you're interested in, I will need to go forward and notify the unions that we're considering this, and then in their next meeting, we would, we would vote on that.
I'm sorry, you'd vote on it, the union next meeting?
No, you would vote on it. I just need to notify them prior to the vote. So, that's what we have to do. I was encouraged that, that GIC did make some plans. I am assuming, long-term assuming, that this is Charlie Baker's background, and that he will certainly pay a lot of attention to this as, as move forward. I have to believe that he's not interested in paying a lot of deficits. I mean, it just means that out of all of our taxes, we're paying for other towns and cities' medical insurance, which really isn't fair to any of us. So, I will be asking in the next meeting for you to consider adopting these three sections.
So, you said there's no downside, but when you notify the unions, I mean, is that going to cause them angst and sense that they want to negotiate something else with you? You know what I mean?
It, it, you know, it certainly will raise some questions. I have talked about it in the Insurance Advisory Committee meetings with them the last two years. I told them that, you know, I saw no reason at that moment to adopt it. I still have, you know, it would be five months before I would even know if it makes any sense. And I don't, I don't know, until those numbers, I won't say it. I'm not looking to use this. I don't want to use it, and we've been avoiding using it. But I thought where it's there, we should pass it and have it there in case we need it. Because if you come back to me in six months and say, "We need to save some money here," this is my only ability to do that. May be minimal and not worth it, or maybe a lot. I have no way of knowing. As I said, it has been minimal the last few years.
Okay.
I'm familiar with 32B.
I'm sorry.
I am familiar with.
I said, "I'm sorry."
Oh, yeah, me too. Well said. And I completely agree with you. There is no real reason not to adopt it. We should still, I think, always make our priority to be in a, in a manner, we should be in a situation where we try to negotiate such changes.
Absolutely.
I know that the unions are willing to work with us.
Yes.
In the past times to help us find ways to save some funding, and I think we've responded to that by increasing our contribution over the last 10 years, about 5%, 6% on the employer's side.
Eight in total.
Maybe even more than that. It was 57.
Fifty-five to 63.
Yeah, so about 5% or 6%. So, it's been a good.
Yes.
Partnership.
And we have, we have had good relations in the Insurance Advisory Committee, good participation, good questions. But the medical world, the medical insurance world, as we're all aware, is changing. I have no idea what the rates are going to be this year. Last year, 2.5% of the increase was, was because of affordable health care. I'm expecting the same this year. I know, you know, that much because of the affordable health care. And the other big issue, which if you look online and any of the things, the cost of prescriptions is, is going through the roof. Two reasons. One, there's a lot of specialty drugs that are coming out, particularly for things like multiple sclerosis and other things that are extremely expensive. Can be hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. For some people, they're of great benefit, but they're expensive. And the other thing is that, for whatever reason, the generic drugs prices have gone up a lot. So, they're, you know, while they're still saving, the prices have gone up a lot. So, I, I don't have a magic ball to know what the rates will be. I will find out from Maya the first week of March, and around that time also. I have bid out Harvard, and we, that would also be negotiable with the unions if we switched, and we'll see what, we'll see what those comparative rates are.
Yeah. Question. One of the problems that we had with this in the past was that our plan, we offer three different opportunities.
Mm-hmm.
And family, single plus, single parent, single partner relationship.
Yes.
The state plan did not have that third option.
Mm-hmm.
That is still the case?
To my knowledge, that's still the case. But I'm not aware that that would stop us, that would require us to make a change to our plans.
No, I'm not suggesting it would. What I'm saying is, is that third option has financially been beneficial to us and to the employees.
Well, it's really just, it's really just a shift of cost between the employee plus one to the family plans. Not saying it's not wrong to do that, but it's.
It's a shifting of costs, but it's lowering the overall cost.
It doesn't lower the total cost.
I don't think so. Are you saying that if, if, well, now I'm confused.
You're saying it's, I don't think it's saving the town any money. It's really just taking, because really, we had those old family plans that were employee plus one and.
Whoever else is there.
Family plus eight, all in one bucket. And so, Blue Cross or Maya really just split that, split those two units up. But at the end of the day, they're still charging.
They didn't change the bucket?
Nope.
No, the bucket doesn't, doesn't change.
So, then they've increased one other component. Then they increased the family plan to offset the lower cost in the middle.
Exactly right. Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Family plan is more expensive.
As a family plan person, I'm paying more. And the Insurance Advisor Group went through this whole process, me and everybody else, not just me, but, you know, the two-person people should be paying less than the family.
Well, they should. I agree. But that bumped up, what you're saying is it bumped up the family cost.
That's right. It absolutely did, yeah. We took a big hit one year. I'm trying, I'm trying to get those kids out of the house as quickly as I can.
Yeah, you've got a long way to go.
Yeah, well, under the new law, under the new law.
You've got like 12 years or something?
More than that, yeah, more than that. He's, you know, they're going to lie about their age. Well, the meat of this, I think, is, is section 22B, which I think is the third or fourth page, third page, I guess. First of all, you know, I see no reason why we would not adopt this.
You're under section B appropriate public authority?
Yeah. That's, that's the meat of it, really. Yeah.
I have no problem with this.
So, you need to notify the unions?
Yes, I need to notify the unions, and then I would be bringing it back to the next meeting for you guys to consider and vote on. If you have any questions in the meantime, I'm happy to try to answer them. There is a lot of stuff out there on it.
I, I, oh, go ahead. Did you have a question?
Yeah. So, basically, make sure I understand. So, the town puts out to bid its health insurance requirement to three companies? I'm not sure how many.
Uh, two this year.
Two.
We've done up to three or four.
So.
Aren't that many choices?
Yeah.
Really, the two, there's, there's Blue Cross, Harvard, and Tufts. Tufts is building their network back again, but in my opinion, they're not quite there yet. So, really, for us, there's two, two choices.
Okay. So, the town negotiates basically the best deal, if you will, for, for the town.
Yes.
For the employees, and then compares, would have the opportunity to compare that, that situation, that.
The process is that I take those quotes to the Insurance Advisory Committee. Insurance Advisory Committee is made up, the only voting members, there's one vote per, per union, and then there is 1/10 of one vote by a retiree who's on, on that board, and then the other 9/10 of that vote is split amongst the unions. So, I present those changes, and I make recommendations. We present with them options, even within those plans will say, "Well, if you take this, this, if you pay $200 for an MRI, we'll save 1%," or however it be. And then they will make a determination as to whether or not they want to accept any changes.
So, at what point in that process would this come into play if, in fact, the selectmen supported this going forward in terms of having this other option available? At what point in that process?
Yeah. It, I believe what this would add, if we went through this process, which I hope we don't, if we went through this process, I think there's, you know, some votes at the very end that you're on the changes. But there is a three-step, three different committees get set up with the unions in this process to try to negotiate some changes. And then ultimately, in the third one, you, you have, if there is a minimum that we can, we can negotiate through, but we can, we can pass that. And of course, we would bring that to you, notify you all the way along. I'm hoping that that is not a requirement. Hoping we just ignore it.
Is it fair to say, maybe a little bit differently, that, that this allows us the opportunity to set a standard as to what the insurance could be as it relates to the state plan, that we can negotiate to?
Yes, we can negotiate to the state.
Right.
Benchmark plan.
So, if we're.
If we want to.
Better and higher.
Yeah.
We have the ability now, without union approval, with, by adopting this, to go, as long as we don't go below that standard.
Right. And we would share the, the cost savings with them, et cetera. But it's not a simple do-it. There's a whole, take about 90 days at least to go through this process.
Okay.
So, that's it.
Really couldn't be developed any worse than, it's just an awful process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can also let you know that, I think it was last week or the week before, the state Supreme Court had a finding that, that said that unions really have no right to negotiate retiree rates. We had pulled it out of our agreements anyway, but that, that could change things for, not so much for us, but for some, some towns that maybe were paying significant portions. Because they're not union members, they're retirees.
Right. And some towns have not forced retirees to go into Medicare.
That's correct.
Which makes no sense.
Right. Some towns, and it also, I mean, we have people that are over 65 here. As long as they're active employees, they can stay on our plan. So, if I'm 70 years old and still an active employee, I can be on Blue Cross, Bushido. I don't have to go on, on the other.
You'll be enrolling soon.
Yeah, based on age, yeah, I'm pretty close.
Couple of years.
Yeah, I'm 70.
I could support it on that basis.
Yeah. Okay. So, you can think about it. You can read these documents. I'm available to answer questions, and I'll come back to the next, next meeting.
Thanks, Scott.
Are you going to talk about our search?
Hmm.
Yes, I am.
He is now. Thanks, Scott.
No, I'm just kidding him, Scott. Give him a hard time. We are in the search for a new chief assessor. We've done, Scott's kind of executed that search, and we have, he's gone through a bunch of resumes. Two of us have interviewed three different candidates. I think we're down to, we think we're down to two, which we passed those on to the chairman of the Board of Assessors for her to look at and to meet with. And then.
Meeting next Wednesday.
So, once the three of us then can choose one of those candidates, we would present that person to you for, just for final approval. According to our bylaws, the finance director gets to choose the person with, in, after having discussions with the Board of Assessors and final approval of the Board of Selectmen. So, there's, it's one of our more convoluted hiring processes, but you do get final stamp of approval. So, we have two very good candidates. So, I'm excited.
Yeah. Okay. Are they both like assistant assessors now?
They have different titles, but, but they're performing the roles of assistant assessor. And I don't want to, they, well, I think in both cases, they're, they're, they have talked to their bosses, so there's no real concern about outing them.
Good towns?
Outting them. But yeah, nearby towns, good towns, comparable towns. Actually, two towns that are probably a little more larger than ours. So, come here as a, as a chief assessor, I think would be what we would look at as a good move. So, thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
See, I got them out of here without any questions.
So far, so good.
Thank you.
So, I had three other quick things before, well, maybe not quick, but three other things before we go to town, before we go to executive session. As I talked about very briefly, we have a dog order that came in, a temporary restraining order. And I gave you the cover memo for that. And I have Hillary's whole packet here, if any of you are interested in looking at it. And then I think I gave you our, just the excerpt of our bylaws.
You did.
Okay. So, it just says, really what it says is, the animal control officer can put a 14-day temporary restraining order on a dog, but then it needs the order of the selectmen to turn that into a permanent order. And then we would go to, we would take action upon that at some time in the future. So, really, at this, where we are in the process right now, Hillary issued this restraining order on February 12th. So, sometime before February 26th, we would need to either take action on that or it expires. And if we don't take action, yeah, so if we don't take action on it by February 26th, it would expire. So, so we have a couple of different options, the way I look at it. We can either, you can take a vote to continue the temporary order. You could, I would think you could vote to delegate that authority either to me or to me and a member of the Board of Selectmen, whichever is your preference, to just make that a permanent order. Or we could take no action and have a special meeting sometime before the 26th and have Hillary come in and make a full presentation. I mean, really, your order, alls the order does is keep the dog on a leash when it's off the property. So, it's, we're not talking about anything of, you know, we're not talking about a ban, you know, a banishment or other more severe.
It's, I'm sorry, Jack, in the order, it's a leash, it has to have a leash on the property, a leash and muzzle off the property. So, it's both, right? In second paragraph?
You're right. While outside upon your property, it needs to have a leash.
Right. Because otherwise, it could run, I assume, is a.
Take it off the property, it needs to be leashed and muzzled. My apologies.
I mean, since we don't meet before then, too, I mean, do we expect, do we normally, or would we expect to get updates on compliance or non-compliance? or would we expect to get updates on compliance or non-compliance? I mean, I, I mean, I understand the process, but it seems to me, how do we know unless we get, unless Hillary or someone gets another complaint?
Well, I mean, so there's been three, my understanding from Hillary is there have been three issues with this dog.
Yeah, that's, that's what it says in here.
Yeah. So she's still continuing to talk to them about how to come into compliance, maybe, you know, talking about building a fence, what other things that might come up for, as suggestions. You know, so she's still at that process where she's working with them. If she can't come to resolution eventually, she would come to us and say, you know, she can't come to resolution with the person, and we need to have a, a dog hearing before the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. So the conditions that she's put in place are only for 14 days, and we as a board need to take action before those expire, or else they, they will expire, right, in 14 days?
Yep.
And in the past, what has been the responsibility of the owner, let's just say that the owner takes some positive steps, don't know exactly what that means, but the owners come back to Hillary, come back to this board and petition to have conditions removed? I mean, how does that work?
That would be a, we've had so few of these. I'm trying to think of.
But we've, we've never had one come back to the board.
Yeah, we've never had one.
Whatever direction, at least in the last 11 years, we've had probably three, two or three of these in 11 years. They're very uncommon, I guess is the good news. But whatever action, I know we had one off of Grove Street where they actually came before us on two different occasions.
Yep.
Because the first one didn't work.
Down in Pondville.
But we've, we've never, Jeff, that I can recall, had a situation where we reversed something, so to speak. That I'm aware of. And we've left that pretty much to Hillary, I think, to use her judgment as to what's appropriate and not appropriate. At least that's been the practice. Not, I can't think of one that we've ever sort of unleashed the dog, so to speak, that I can remember. Can you, Marion?
Well, I think since I was on the board, we had the one where the, people had built a fence, remember?
Yeah.
It was.
Yeah, we had one down in Pondville, years and years ago.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, Hillary's a professional, and, you know, I certainly respect her action and her recommendation.
I guess what Jack wants us to do, whether we just let it go in 14 days, or do we want to vote to keep it until further notice?
The most straightforward thing would be for you to just vote to, you know, I mean, the, upon receipt of such report, the selectman may make such order concerning the restraint, muzzling, or disposal of such dog as may be deemed necessary. So you're really just taking her order and making it a permanent or, permanent order. Obviously, it's a permanent order until, you know, they could come to us and appeal and, and you could reverse your order. But you're making that a permanent.
So we could do this one two ways. We could either empower you to deal with this when this expires, or we could so execute that this evening, and then they could, in fact, as you suggest, come back and appeal for its removal.
Yeah.
Why create an extra step? Why, why not just order its execution, if you will, and if things have improved to the point where Hillary feels it's not endangering other folks, they can come back. I mean.
Yeah.
I put that burden on you in, in 14 days to, to do that, unless you want.
I think that's the wisdom, you're, you're like Solomon tonight. I think that's wise.
Okay.
He's more qualified than I am, though. He has a dog. He has a dog.
We all have dogs, yeah, we have, yeah, but no, all right. All right, so can I get a motion into?
I will. So move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So order stays unless appealed.
Thank you. So the two other things are just the issues list. One's a list, one's a memo. I handed out. Start with Ray, who's the office of the town planner. He and I had some discussions and came up with a bright idea of just sharing all these things with you. And of course, he always welcomes your questions if you want to talk to him. But I'll just briefly kind of scan through it, and if you have any questions, stop me. Development projects, he's got 106 and 108 Main Street. And actually, he read that, the owner of that property reached out to Marion today. He's going to schedule a time to come either meet, well, he'd meet with a selectman or the Board of Selectmen sometime in March. We got to figure that out.
I've been, I'm familiar with what he is proposing, and at least from what I've seen and what he's, it, it, it's a pretty nice project, what I've seen. And it is friendly. I know it's quoted here, but to date, it is a friendly relationship in terms of 40B.
Yeah, and the second one would probably fall into that same, similar category. There's, I'm not saying there's not issues with either of them, but this one would have 52 units on the old quote-unquote Boy Scout property, 55 in age. It's an age-restricted subdivision, 40B again they're talking about. So he'd come into us, meet with us several months ago. I'm sure he would like to come meet with us again sometime before his final submission. Holbrook Street, they have six lots that are in the, in front of the planning board, at least for preliminary plan. Frederickson, there's the.
It's more than six lots, I think.
I thought it was nine, but he wrote six here, so I was wondering, I thought maybe it got shrunk, but maybe, maybe we just discovered.
No, Holbrook.
Holbrook.
I thought it was nine.
Well, Ray won't, Ray won't get a star on his report if it's nine.
Ray, you want to text Marion?
Frederickson Road, I think you've, you've heard a little bit about that, the development that's going on there. Southwood, George Vallone, really, right now, he's working on finding a water source. You can see, he's reached out to Walpole, who's not interested, and he is having some discussions with the prison. Lawrence Street seems to be in a holding pattern right now, but that's the old Buckley Man property. Sill's Cafe continues. I think there's still some, a little bit of challenges going on between the property owner and the business owner and trying to get all that synced up, but hopefully that will come together soon. Dunkin' Donuts on Dedham Street, if people drive by that, and they, that, they're going lightning fast up there. So that's Dunkin' Donuts and gas station and.
Subway.
Subway, thank you. And then Island Lighting is, they've bought five or six of the lots up at Shire Park, so across the street from where the police station will be. Plus, they've got some on, on the same side of the street. But that's going to be, that's a business that'll be moving from, they're on Hill Street right now, which is over in Pondville. And it'd be nice to move that out of there, because it's a, big trucks in a real tight neighborhood. So they, they seem to be doing very well. You can see some of the other things that Ray's working on is subdivision bylaws, GIS mapping for zoning, mobile housing he's working with soon, economic development, still looking for a solution to our stop and chop challenge. He's, he is, you know, actively looking for businesses to, to bring them into 1A and, and other available parcels, commercial parcels. The third bullet down there is a, is a good one that we talked about for a while. He wants to help kind of foster the creation of a local business association. I think when I first got here, there was the, kind of the tail ends of an old business association, and Ray would like to try and work with the association, work with the business community to bring that back. I think there'd be a lot of good that could come from that. So I encourage any of the business owners that are listening to contact Ray and, or me, and have some conversations about that. I think Ray would like to talk about the establishment of kind of an annual Fine Arts and Crafts Weekend in October. You know, he's trying to, trying to, just, it's in the vein of trying to brand Norfolk. You know, we have a lot of arts and crafts type folks in town, and we do a lot at the library. When we had that, it was the Business Day back six, seven years ago? We had the.
Yeah.
Pie, the first, the first pie eating contest?
Yes.
That was very successful.
Norfolk Day. I think we just called it Norfolk Day in September.
And we didn't want to compete with, you know.
That was a great day.
Community Day, June, yeah.
But if we branded it differently and had, you know, Arts and Crafts Day, but, but that's something that Ray just thought, trying to, trying to help, you know, bring people to Norfolk and, and build up our visibility. Something, one of his ideas that he's kicking around.
September would be a great time to do that.
Yeah.
People are coming back from the summer and sort of bring everybody back into the fold of the community. That'd be a good time to do.
Before school starts or right after school starts, yeah.
Where else are we? Energy Manager, Dave Lutz is, you know, he's our contractor working with us. He has been doing a lot. He's working at streetlights, both in the center of town and all over, continuing the work on kind of establishing the baselines for the community, the energy consumption of all of our buildings. Ray's working with Clark University to bring some interns here to do some work on a community planning program.
Jack, is, is Dave's situation from the grant?
Yep, yep. And then the Norfolk Development Handbook, something he picked up and knows needs updating and improving. He's working with the high school and the town planner to try and make some improvements to that, that he would obviously bring to us and to the planning board for, for review. So he's got a lot going on. So some of those things are incorporated in my issues list. Jim asked me to, to bring this, this is something I used to do on a regular basis, and this is kind of a mini version of my issues list, but I'll, so I'll, I'll add to it, but I just put on here kind of the top 20 or so items that we've got going on. The budget, obviously, all the department heads have put together their budgets at this point, the first draft of their budgets. Julie and I are now consolidating those. We're still, still gathering information on the revenue side as well, trying to figure out where we will be for revenues in the upcoming year. The governor hasn't released his, his local aid, House One, I guess you call it, yet, but, so there's continuing, ongoing work on the budget. Capital, we need to, one thing that we need to do, and I can probably bring some recommendations to you at the next meeting, but if you could start thinking about what do we want to do for capital. And that's always a, it's always a challenge, more so, I guess, than the regular budget for me because of the uncertainty of what we're going to use, you know, we're going to spend.
The 245 that we got in last year is certified now for this year, so that's.
Yeah, we got, so we have some free cash in the bank, so, so we could certainly, that would be the, the base, or the starting point where we would start from. This year's prison mitigation money is gone, at least for now. Hopefully it'll come back.
He could reinstate it.
He could reinstate it if, yep, he could.
We're hopeful.
We're hopeful. And then we, one of the things that Bob McGee and I have been talking about is, is the road, continuing the road program that we did last year is to have a couple, have a separate warrant article for, for road articles, whether we borrow for that or find some cash or put some cash aside, that we can talk about that. But I think we'd like to see the road program continue on in the, the manner that we've done.
That worked out real good for us. One road program that we voted on as a winner.
Nice, nice, that's.
No, still a great idea, though.
Can't bring him anywhere.
Jack.
So we need, I, you know, one thing I meant to ask Marion, and I, and I didn't, is just, we got to look at the capital committee. So if there are people that are interested, I think, I'm sure we need some more people on the capital committee. Yeah, so.
And any of them signed in? Down two-two or need to?
Down two.
Down two-two.
We have to.
Two-two.
So. People are interested in capital. We need some people on the capital committee.
Have we heard anything more from the gentleman that came in and spoke to us about volunteering? And he was going to visit with conservation or anyone?
I've been in touch with him. He was going to come to the Energy Committee meeting that I attended last week, but he had, he was leaving town the next day, so he had to do some shelving and get out. But yeah, he tried to get out to.
There's a surprise.
Yeah, he's going to, he's going to Colorado, which I think had less snow. So he's, he's still interested, he wants to go, you know, I, I gave him all the dates and the site to look for the meetings of conservation and energy, so he's still engaged.
Yeah, no problem. I actually linked in with him now, too, so. So I'll pick up the pace a little bit here, just because there's a lot here. My email conversion, we're going to, Michael's developed a plan to, we're going to convert off of virtual Norfolk, first class, and get onto Google Mail, the corporate version of Google Mail. So that'll be, I'm very excited about that. And we'll have a full archiver, which will be nice. That way we can have some, we can archive mail and, and have a full audit compliant email version. DPW contract is under negotiations. Scott and Bob McGee are working on that. Are building a liability insurance and medical insurance, as Scott talked about earlier, are going through their processes right now. We do think that there are going to be, because of our experience, you know, we get reports, we don't get individual, you know, we don't know individuals, et cetera, but we do get reports as far as experience on our health insurance, and there is some concern that we're going to, we're going to see some spikes due to that.
What are the issues on the liability side?
A few car accidents this year. DP, both DPW and police have had nothing, nothing dramatic, but they've both had claim, three or four claims.
Was this the hood incident?
Yeah, the hood, the, the target practice on the hood, that was one. We had an incident in a, the high-speed chase. The driver decided to slam our car. It's under his insurance, but I think he was underinsured, so we still got.
It's automobile, basically, related.
Yeah. Wastewater Treatment Plant, as you know, we took acquisition of that. I'm working with the town council to develop regulations that we'll present to you. And that'll, that'll incorporate a lot of things, but, but one of the things that I'm trying very quickly to get done is, is the revenue and the billing factors of that. So that will be done for your next meeting.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Yes.
I know there were several open issues on that. There was, there were some past payments. They were in arrears on payments under the old agreement. That's not our issue, right?
Not our issue.
So we start clean January 1st.
Yep.
So we're in February. Has there been a, there's no billing cycle yet?
No, not yet.
Is it quarterly?
Yep.
Quarterly, okay. And did we get the 67,000 in the bank?
I think we've gotten this, I'll have to check. I, I think we've gotten the 67,000, but we haven't gotten the $13,000 yet.
Okay.
Which was the gift for the road program. But I didn't ask Julie that today, so let me ask that, and I can give you a call tomorrow.
Thank you.
Long-term projects, again, a lot of these are covered by Ray. Keridus is continuing to move forward. Hopefully, they're going to find some water. Water, we are developing a new source, hopefully looking for a new source. Environmental Partners is doing the evaluation of all the properties. We'll have that report by the end of the month. Buckley Man, we talked about Metacomet Regional Communication Center. That's the regional dispatch center. Obviously, that's down at Shire Place, Shire Park. Obviously, we've got the building, we've got the, so the REC has their project manager and architect under contract. We've got the first kind of working diagrams, the conceptual diagrams of the, of the, oh, I didn't bring it, of the REC. They're really looking for a nine, nine-seat facility. That will, we think we'll start with five, and then for future growth, we'll have up to nine stations for dispatchers. We're working with the state to negotiate, you know, how much of that they're going to pay for. Obviously, we want them to pay for 100% of it, so that we don't have to come back to the towns for money. And that's obviously still the goal is to have the, and I think they will, once we work, finish that work with them. Skip ahead to the Police and Fire. Skip ahead to the police and fire station. Um, obviously, the, the, those are contingent on the same building. We've hired the project manager. We are now, have been, we've, we're published for hiring the architect. Um, by the end of March, we'll have, uh, the architect on board for that project, and then, um, the, what the committee talked about is probably coming back to the town, um, really in September for, uh, for construction funds. Um, we're hoping to do it in May, but it, we want, we want to have, I think we talked about last time, you know, Jim pushed and, and the committee agreed that we should really have rock-solid numbers for, uh, coming to the town for, for estimates for the cost of that project.
Great, thank you.
And then the Freeman Kennedy School, um, we are so close to being done. We just, uh, have some sound mitigation units that are being installed on the building for, to mitigate some of the sound off the HVAC units.
What about, because they asked at the Energy Committee, so I'll see, the S-Rex, we haven't done anything with those, that they're not being sold, I was told? Not that it was told, but I mean, that's the question, for the, on top of the roof? I know we're getting the Energy Credit, but you, you know, the S-Rex, are those?
Uh, I get, we have a consultant looking at that. I don't, I'll have to ask him.
Oh, okay. I didn't know, the, 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 their impression was not yet, or they could be sold, or we could hire a consultant to do it.
They'll come into the general fund once those get sold. Um, so, uh, I'd only bring that up, there was debate at, at the very beginning about where that money would go, but, uh, um, so, yeah, no, we will, we will sell those. We don't get the S-Rex on the, on the big solar field.
No. Thanks, Jack.
Oh, and then down the bottom, uh, we talked with the chief assessor. We also are, um, I don't think he's officially started the process yet, but at some point this spring, we will be hiring a police officer who will be replacing Officer Carlson, who retired in the fall. Um, and we do have some other, in Chuck's budget, he's got some, uh, I won't make any announcements yet, but we will have some other retirements coming up on the Police Department, at the officer's level.
Shouldn't have expected.
Uh, yeah, shouldn't have expected, one this summer, an officer, a sergeant, actually. So, be unfortunate, but, uh-
Yeah.
But an opportunity as well.
Yeah, that's too bad.
It is, I would, uh, I don't want to say anything that we've got a-
I, I know what you mean. That's, I didn't, I thought he was gonna stay longer.
Well, I don't know if we're talking about the same guy, so we'll have to talk offline.
Okay.
Uh, not the deputy chief, if that's who you're talking about.
Hmm?
Not, it's not the deputy chief, if that's who you're talking about.
I didn't think he was a sergeant.
What else, Jack?
Huh, all right, I'll get my place on that one, yeah.
Picked you up, picked you up quick on that.
All I got.
All I got. So you said nothing on the draft warrant, or you don't want, we don't want, we don't need to talk about that?
No, I was, I, when I put the, I was working at a severe handicap last week, I didn't have Marion, she was on vacation, so I put the agenda together thinking the, uh, the warrant article deadline was last week, but it's, it's this week.
Yeah, 19th, right? Reminder of the 4:00 PM, 19th.
I have, I have-
Two days.
I have requested one article be added to the warrant that's worthy, I think, of mentioning. You folks may not agree with me. Um, but I would like an article to go on the warrant that requires any consultant contract that is, um, one year or longer in duration must, by, any consultant hired by any board must, is subject to the approval of the Board of Selectmen. Not six-month or three, you know, ZBA and different boards use consultants for short periods of time, as does conservation. But if we're entering into a longer-term contract, one year or more, I think, as it is in many towns, I think those are subject to the approval of the Executive Board, which is a Board of Selectmen. So I would like to put a warrant article on that requires that. And I'm sure it will have some entertaining debate.
Jeff, do you have anything before we go into executive session?
Uh, in terms of the burden here from all the snow, I mean, they're talking about Boston spend is like twice what they budgeted. I mean, is that where we're at, that type of order of magnitude?
Yeah. We're in the 350-
I hope we're only at twice what we budgeted. That would be actually good news.
Yeah, we're probably in the 350 to 400,000 dollar range at this point.
And we budgeted what, 150, right?
175.
Oh, 175?
175, yeah. We've had 400 and some odd thousand before.
Yeah.
If this keeps up.
I think people are at the, you mentioned earlier, I think people are at the, getting to the breaking point. Um, you know, it's like, it's like when your power's out for three days, you know, you can handle it for one day or two days, it's kind of cute, you know?
One, one day, I'm not going two days. One day is fine.
But I think now with the, with the snow and the, and the streets continuing to shrink, uh, you know, I was going down Holbrook today, and there was a, a oil truck going one way and a milk truck going the other way, and they both, you know, had to go-
Get there.
They both had to go into the curb, the snow pile to, so now all that snow gets dragged out into the road, and, uh, Holbrook is now a, a mess, um, and I know there are many other roads.
And a lot of our streets are that way right now. It's hard for two cars to get, I mean, in Grove, you have to pull off and literally stop to let one car go by.
Yeah.
It's tough.
You know, short of, short of running down every street with a snow blower and throwing the snow over the, over the top of the mound, I'm not sure what we can do other than having, it's either that or having the plows drive down at 90 miles an hour and, you know, have them launch the snow.
Yeah, that'd be great.
But that, that doesn't work either, obviously, with, uh, mailboxes and, uh, and obviously the danger.
I found my mailbox, by the way. I did find it.
In the backyard?
Pretty close. It wasn't in my yard, I can tell you that. But anyway, we did find it.
Yeah. I, I, I hope people are, uh-
It is what it is.
Are understanding, especially of mailboxes, uh-
Mine's been a casualty. Still hanging out there by threads.
Duct tape, it's a wonderful thing.
Yep.
Some, some people are very smart, and they have winter mailboxes and summer mailboxes.
Yeah, just put them on a post and hang it out in the snowbank.
Yeah.
It's a great idea, actually, next year.
But I would just, I think the DPW's been an outstanding job. Um, they, they went out last week, several nights, and, uh, you know, with the front-end loaders, and then took, took where there was, uh, big piles of snow, you know, and low 115, et cetera, and had to go drag those out of here so that when the next storm came, we had places to put snow. Um, so they've been putting in a lot of hours.
Well, there isn't anything in the forecast for seven days now, so we're doing hard work.
Oh, okay. Jeez. Summertime already.
We haven't had, uh, like, any roof collapse issues, anything like that to-
Oh, nothing of, nothing of, uh-
Jeff's just trying to bring up all that, yeah.